Good afternoon. If everybody could take their seats, please. Thanks for taking time out of your Sunday afternoon to come join us for what we think is a signature event in the whole arena of public discourse. It's very unusual, extremely rare, to have a Republican and a Democrat here doing a joint town hall meeting. My name is Phil Blumer. I am Congressman Johnson's Communications Director. And we have several members of our staff here that I'd like to introduce before we get started. If you have any personal issues with the federal government, any constituent problems you want us to help address, please see one of the staff members after this meeting, and we'll assist you. We have Joan Dykstra here, our District Director, and back there. Coming in now is Shawna Khan. She handles all our immigration and visa work. Randy Parr is with her. She does a lot of Social Security issues. Who else? Kevin Johnson handles AIG issues for us. Will Kyles is here. I don't see Will now. Well, in any case, Congressman Johnson, I probably, you probably know as much about him as I do, because he's been representing you either in Congress or in the General Assembly for the last 35, 40 years or so. He's been in Congress now since 2001, and he was in the General Assembly for 24 years before that. Congressman Murphy is now in his third term in Congress, and for eight years prior to that was in the Connecticut General Assembly. Congressman Murphy serves on Foreign Affairs Committee and on Government Oversight Committee. And most importantly, for our purposes today, he is co-chair of the Center Isle Caucus. Tim Johnson cofounded the Center Isle Caucus in 2005, and we hope this becomes a platform for civil dialogue in Congress. We hope to do many more of these kinds of events in the future. With that, I'll turn it over to Congressman Johnson, and then he'll make a few remarks, and then Congressman Murphy will make a few remarks, and then we'll take questions from the audience. If you can keep your questions brief and to the point, we can get to as many people as possible in the course of the hour we have here. Thank you for coming, and I'll turn it over to Tim.
Is your microphone on? I think so. Are you audible here? Well, first of all, let me just express my sincere appreciation to my staff, a very specific and sincere appreciation to Congressman Chris Murphy, my good friend, who I'll talk about in a moment, who's an extraordinary representative of his district in the country. But in every case, and I think Chris would agree, my appreciation to you. I'm never unmindful, I hope I don't act as though I'm unmindful, of the fact that every day that I have, and Congressman Murphy has the opportunity to represent this nation, it's because of people like you. I know in the audiences I see around, friends and people that I know, a tremendous divergence of philosophies and party affiliation and backgrounds. But what you all share, and I'm so grateful for, is your good citizenship. And you're here in the middle of a Saturday afternoon, right preceding the Cardinals game, by the way.
Who? Sorry.
That evidences to me again why I'm blessed, and I think the Connecticut 5th District voters would, Chris would assess likewise, to have you as my constituents. This is just an incredible privilege, and I hope I never act like that I deserve it, only that I'm grateful for it, and I do the best I can to carry out the mission that you've given me. This is, as Phil Blumer said, a probably unique, certainly extremely rare event. The Center Isle Caucus was formed about six years ago by myself and Congressman Israel, a Democrat from New York, and has now grown to about 40 or 50 members, about equally divided on each side of the aisle, with the, at least, express purposes of compromise where it's available, coalitions where we can, and in every case, civility and decency within the process. We've been very successful in part of that program. We have a number of pieces of legislation now, and only in House rules, but in the process, a two-year budget process. Congressman Murphy has some extraordinarily good legislation, Billie's Law, I think, that we're working on together, Codell, Relief, and otherwise. But frankly, within the processes it is, you can only achieve a certain amount in terms of a legislative agenda. And we've had a number of speakers before our organization, Doris Kearns Goodwin, New York Mayor Michael Bloomberg, Executive Director of the World Food Program, Josette Sheeran, former Senator Allen Simpson, the list is fairly legion. But the essential message that we're trying to bring to the American people is that members of Congress, contrary to what you see in the 24/7 cycle, can, should, and do work together. That decency is still a prime goal, and that as much as the 24/7 cycle sometimes excludes that in the process, we do have people who are working together and want to grow in working together in a cooperative spirit in the interests of the United States. I think Congressman Murphy, by the way, and I'll be his press agent here, he is also a candidate for the United States Senate this time, in the next election cycle, as I'm apparently going to be, I obviously am going to be a candidate for reelection to the House. We have worked together on a number of things, but I think we would share this assessment of our constituents and the American people, more than ever in my political lifetime, and I think in Congressman Murphy's as well. There is a tremendous belief, very legitimate belief, that Congress, and for that matter, government at all levels, is out of control. The dysfunctionality, the anger, the bickering, the inability to work together, the unwillingness to work together, has reached monumental proportions, and that we've got to do something about it. If there's no other message that people have given to me over the course of the last, particularly the last six months, but frankly, over the last number of years, is, why don't you people in Washington get along? Why does the first thing out of the mouth of a Republican when there's a Democrat proposal, why does it have to be all the evil in the proposal? And vice versa. Why can't you work together on common solutions to common problems? Why does there have to be brinksmanship? Why does there have to be anger and anxiety? And that's our mission today. You remember when Standard and Poor's downgraded our credit in August? It wasn't just because we didn't, some people felt, feel, successfully deal with the debt issue. They specifically referenced, in that Standard and Poor's report, the rancor, the anger, the angst in DC. And so we're not only having an effect in terms of mood, but we're having an effect on the future of America, and that's not good. Now, I will say in defense of the system that it's not news when there's harmony. There's news when somebody rails at the President, or when somebody on the other side rails at Speaker Boehner. That's news. It's not news on any of the 24/7 cycle, when people actually coalesce and work together. And so our job is to try to take that message to the American people, and in this case, the people of the 15th District. Segue. Congressman Chris Murphy, U.S. Representative, 5th District of Connecticut, serves on the Foreign Affairs Committee, Committee on Oversight and Government Reform, which is extraordinarily important committee, has already established a tremendous reputation as not only somebody of ultimate civility and decency, but also has significant accomplishments, not only in Congress, but also in the Connecticut General Assembly. He's dealt with a number of issues, healthcare issues, the workplace smoking ban, Stem Cell Investment Act, children's rights issues, and otherwise. But most particularly, and most relevantly for the purposes of this meeting, and I will tell you that in a relatively short order, I'm going to be in the 5th District of Connecticut in a parallel meeting in his district, he has established a reputation and a relationship with me of decency, of civility, and the sorts of things that I think America should evidence. And it's just an incredible privilege, Congressman Murphy, to have you here with us today. I think everybody in the audience would join in saying that you took a long trip. He's all the way here from Connecticut, because he cares about what we're about, and I'm looking forward not only to the rest of today, but at least a year and a half more in the House, and then continuing to work with you in the future. So, thank you for being with us, and I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Well, thank you very much, Tim, and thank you for sending Congressman Johnson to Washington. I want to talk about him in turn as well, because I'm really standing here, getting the chance to do this incredibly unique event because of Tim's leadership. And I'm extremely glad to be here with you all today. I flew in this morning to Chicago, and one of Tim's great staffers picked me up at the airport to drive me down, and the whole ride, I just kept on asking her, as we're driving, you know, down south from Chicago, is, when do we get to the mountains? Where, this doesn't look like where I live. But it's beautiful country. To give you just a little quick snapshot as to where I'm from, in the district I represent. I represent northwest Connecticut in Congress. You know, a lot of people have an image of Connecticut as being one big suburb of New York. And, well, there are a lot of people who sort of orient themselves down to New York City and commute in and out of jobs there. My district really is not connected to New York. I have an interesting mixture, which is not unlike this district, but maybe flipped in its percentages of industrial and agricultural production. I have some sort of quintessential old industrial New England cities. In fact, I have the cities that call themselves the Hat City, the Brass City, the Silver City, and the Hardware City. And as you can imagine, we don't make much of those things any longer, but our cultural and economic identity in my district is tied up in manufacturing. But I also have northwestern Connecticut, which is a very rural part of the state, and a place where a lot of dairy farming is still done. And so we have a decent portion of our economy tied up in agriculture as well. And so what has drawn Tim and I together is not just our interest in promoting civility, but, you know, also the fact that we tend to find our names on a lot of similar bills, sticking up for American manufacturing and sticking up for America's farmers. But I will say this, I knew about Tim Johnson before we had met, because, as I hope he has here, Tim in Washington has an unrivaled reputation for his proactivity in keeping in touch with his constituents. When you get to Washington, I will tell you, you hear about Tim Johnson, you hear about this member of Congress, who on any given day is running through phone numbers, calling constituents on a daily basis to check in, whether they've called the office or not, to find out, in as organic a way as possible, what his district wants from their member of Congress. And there are a lot of new members of Congress who have thought a little differently about how they can creatively keep in touch with the pulse of their district because of the reputation that Tim has. But his reputation has grown, in part because of his leadership role in promoting discourse and civility. And I get to be today the chair, the co-chair of the Center Isle Caucus because of Tim's vision and the vision of Steve Israel, who I took over for. I'm in my third term, so I'm relatively new to Washington, but when I got there, I was just dumbfounded by how hard it was to become friends with people on the other side of the aisle. I was in the Connecticut Legislature for about eight years, and I was, you know, we fought, you know, as the two parties do, but, you know, in the end of the day, we got together and did good things for the state, in part because we had relationships across the aisle, because we were friends. And what I found in Washington was that was very, very hard, because, one, you didn't live in the same place, people mainly lived back in their districts, and that's understandable and defensible, but, you know, also because, you know, when you were, you know, done legislating for the day, you were, you know, off, you know, doing politicking, you know, whether it was getting your campaign ready or raising money, you were, you know, spending a lot more of your time than you probably did 10 or 20 years ago, doing other things than creating relationships with people on the other side of the aisle. And so in my second term, having, you know, really stewed about this and wondered how I could continue to be a member of Congress without finding real ways to invest in those relationships across the aisle, I discovered the Center Isle Caucus. And I became a member, and shortly after I became a member, the Democratic founder, Steve Israel, was stepping down and asked me to take his place. And I found in this group just a real unique opportunity to get to know people on the other side of the aisle, to find issues that we can work on together. And I've done that with Tim and with Joanne Emerson, a Republican from Missouri, and some other members. And I feel like I'm a better member of Congress, a better representative for my district because of the work that I've been able to do through the Center Isle Caucus. And my thanks really all go to Tim for having that vision to found it in the first place. But as he said, the reality is that in Washington today, nothing can get done if the two parties aren't working together. You know, this isn't a one-party town any longer. And when I'm traveling around my district, this economy and the misery that has come with it affects everybody, whether you are registered as a Republican or registered as a Democrat, whether you have liberal leanings or conservative leanings. And people are demanding responses from Washington that get past this historical, and I think worse than ever, division between the two sides. The Center Isle Caucus is not going to solve this problem alone, but I think Tim's initial idea, and my hope now, as one of the organizers of it, is that at least it's part of the solution rather than part of the problem. And, you know, I'm really looking forward to this. I've been looking forward to this for a long time, since we hatched this idea a month or so ago. Because I think what you'll see, you know, as you ask questions, is that, you know, there are a lot of things that we don't agree on. I mean, there are going to be places where, you know, Tim and I are not on the same page. But what we do agree on is that we shouldn't allow those differences to stop us from having a conversation, to stop us from eventually trying to find some common ground. That's what our constituents want. That's what this country is desperate for today. And I think that's why we hope to be a growing organ for communication in Washington. So, to Tim and to all your constituents, thank you for sending him there. Thank you for having me here today. I am really looking forward to Tim coming out and joining me in Connecticut later this year, hopefully, and looking forward to the dialogue we have today. Thank you very much.
We'll open it up for questions now. Keep your questions brief. I don't know that we'll be able to get to everybody, but we'll try our best. Did you have a question?
Yes.
All right. Could you stand and identify yourself, please?
I'm Nick Dahl-Rumpel, and I'm the 99 percent. And I know that we've talked a lot in the past about the gap between, in education, between those that are well-educated and those that can't succeed in education, for whatever the reason has been, and we've spent a lot of years trying to close that gap. The number-one indicator of success in school is the income of the parents. And I was wondering about your opinion about either the 99 percent movement or how to close that gap between the super-rich and the poor. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take a first stab at that. It's interesting, just as I was coming in, one of the reporters asked me what I thought about, you know, this Occupy Wall Street movement that's going on. And I said that, you know, my feelings on it are in some ways similar to my feelings about the Tea Party movement. And, you know, when I say that, sometimes it's surprising, because obviously they come from different ends of the spectrum, but I think they're both rooted in this just raw frustration with the direction of this country and the direction of our economy, that there's a feeling that, you know, people and families don't have control of their lives in a way that they used to. And that's true. The question ultimately is, what are the ways that government can try to help bring control back to people's lives, and what are the ways in which government needs to step out of the way to give people control of their lives? And I'm someone who doesn't believe that the answer is only on one side of that ledger. I will say this, there's a really interesting book out, and I can get you the name of it, it's escaping me, that surveyed over the last 200 years, both in this country and in Europe, the history of wealth inequality, and sort of charted when societies, you know, have a widening gap between the rich and poor, and then when it shrinks. And with the assumption that it's better when you have, you know, a smaller gap. And they surveyed all of the policies in all of these countries to try to find, what's the one policy that leads to a smaller gap between the rich and the poor? And to the first point of your question, their answer was education. Was it all of the things, tax policy, environmental policy, investments in infrastructure? The one thing that tracked a rise of people sort of down below into the ranks of those who have enough wealth to get by was education. And so it's appropriate that we're sitting here on one of the nation's preeminent universities. I just have a belief that, while there are lots of different things that we can ultimately do to try to help people who are poor get less poor, that giving them access to the best educational system in the world is at the top of the list. And making sure that we don't let failing schools continue to fail, making sure that we have enough public university systems around the country to feed the growing demand for that kind of educational skill set. I think ultimately, though there are a lot of answers to the question you pose, to me, education is at the top of the list.
I think what we can do, what we can gather from this meeting is ideas about what the Center Isle Caucus can do proactively in various areas. And I think the one area that, one of a number of areas where Congressman Murphy and I have an agreement, is the tremendous significance of education in the future of America, and the importance of that engine, not only for personal growth, but for economic growth. And we certainly want to, I'm sure that two of us, as well as Congress, needs to do a better job. Frankly, I'll cast stones where it's appropriate, the Illinois Legislature needs to do a whole lot better job in terms of prioritization of education and what that can mean for America. So, your organization does a good job, and we need to do a better job sometimes in partnering with you.
Congressman, thank you for both being attendants at this event here today. And Congressman Murphy, welcome to Central Illinois. My name is Joe Alexander. I'm from Clinton, Illinois, which is about 45 minutes west of here. And we have an excellent nuclear power plant, and actually, Illinois has more nuclear power plants than any other state in the country. I know Congressman Murphy, as you've served in the House, that you've spent quite a bit of time on national defense issues, and I'm of the opinion that a strong energy policy is a vital aspect of a strong country. And I realize that our friends in the Northeast might have a slightly different perspective, but I didn't know your thoughts on nuclear power, just a strong public policy on energy issues.
No, I, it's interesting. Obviously, we have, you know, a lot of different needs and issues that come up in the Northeast than may present themselves in the Midwest, but Connecticut, actually, on a state-by-state basis, has the highest energy costs of any state in the nation. And you want to talk about what are some of the reasons why we've seen a flight of manufacturing jobs in Connecticut? Well, there are, again, a lot of reasons. One of them is the high energy cost. And so we're a state that actually gets about 40 percent of our power from nuclear energy. We've got one reactor down on the shoreline that provides almost the majority of our power. And, well, admittedly, there's, you know, a piece of the Democratic Party that, you know, has had a longstanding historical opposition to nuclear power. I'm somebody that believes that we ultimately can get to a country that is largely renewable, energy-based, but that nuclear power is going to be and needs to be part of our energy mix. Obviously, there are some big questions that have to be answered. Disposal at the top of the list as we seek to expand that footprint. But, you know, I've been very supportive of, you know, some of the efforts in Congress recently to try to restart some of our nuclear energy production and construction, though it may be more associated with parts outside of the Northeast. Connecticut is a state that has a very, very strong reliance on nuclear power, and, you know, we've done it safely and relative to a lot of other sources pretty cheaply.
Joe, you, this would be typical of, I suppose, elected officials, at least in my case, I sometimes take a simple question and make a long answer, but I think that feeds into the issue, no pun intended, of the energy issue in the United States. Part of what Congressman Murphy saw on the way from Chicago to Champaign is flat land, don't have mountains, don't have a lot of lakes, but we have incredible renewable sources of energy in terms of soybeans, corn, and otherwise. And we need to understand, I believe we need to understand, that our energy crisis is not insoluble, but it's multifaceted. And isolating ourselves to simply carbon fuels, petroleum, is not the answer. We need to look to a wide variety. In fact, you didn't go by, but one of the relatively controversial areas in the landscape of Central Illinois is wind power. We have huge numbers of wind turbines in Ford, Livingston, Iroquois, and for that matter, into McLean and areas to the north, and likewise, renewable fuels. So it's a very difficult issue, but we have a lot of potential solutions, quote-unquote, including nuclear.
Another question.
I think we have a little cellphone issue here with somebody.
I know.
That's all right. No problem.
You got it?
No, no problem. Believe me, it's, at least you're not in church. I've had that happen.
I hope you don't think this is church. Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name's Mike Frogley, and I'm curious to hear more about this Center Isle Caucus. I have some questions, but this one in particular, I'm interested in hearing you expand on sort of your plan for this caucus and how you plan on growing it, because its success is very much tied to its growth, specifically reaching into maybe the more extreme aspects or individuals in your respective parties. And I'm also interested in you giving us a specific example of you reaching across the aisle and resolving some sort of a controversial issue amongst yourselves, so we can get an idea of exactly how this is actually working.
Good question. This was founded, as I say, about six years ago, and I will give credit again to Congressman Murphy. His emergence as co-chairman a couple of years ago, this committee with myself, Congressman Emerson from Missouri, and I think Congressman Carnahan, if I'm not mistaken, has really re-energized what we're doing. A lot of it, quite frankly, to this audience who wants, I know I'm not saying this audience, but the American people are looking for specific solutions to major issues of debt, spending, and international relations and all that, maybe fall short of what you think we should do. But we've attacked areas, we've worked, we continue to work on areas, but our main message is mood. Our main issue is civility. We've grown from an initial probably eight or 10 members to about 50 members, about equally divided between the parties. We have to pick up the pace, but we have, we try to have monthly meetings with various speakers to come in. And what we do, frankly, 80 percent of it is more mood symbolism than it is specific issues. And I'm not saying that that's appropriate, but that's our best parameters we've been able to deal with now. So, for example, during the State of the Union address, Chris and I made a point, various points, we sit on both sides of the aisle. I was excoriated by some people, because I sat with or near Jesse Jackson Jr., who's a friend of mine, on the other side of the aisle. And I'm sure likewise, Democrats who sat on our side have been excoriated because they had the audacity to actually sit with somebody with whom you don't always agree. But that sort of symbolism is exactly the sort of thing that I think can improve America. Does it solve the debt problem? Does it get us out of Afghanistan? Does it deal with problems of education otherwise? No, it doesn't. But is the bigger message one that's good for America, and is good for long-run solutions to problems, and a short-run problem of acrimony, anger, and angst? The answer is yes.
Let me try to say a couple of things quickly here, because I think, I think Tim's right, and I, you know, I've sort of stepped into the vision of this after a few years of its operation. But I think he's right, that what we're really trying to do is create a platform of civility for these, for these big compromises to be made. We tend to be, you know, we don't have Nancy Pelosi and John Boehner as members of this group, right? You know, we tend to be more of the rank-and-file members, and so we, you know, want to sort of show an example that our leaders may be willing to follow. And there are smaller efforts that, you know, result from this. For instance, you know, I'm going to be a big supporter and cosponsor of one of Tim's bills to bring some more common sense, long-term planning to the budget. He's become a sponsor of one of my bills. Through this relationship, I'm working with another member on trying to find some bipartisan compromise on allowing seniors to bring drugs in from Canada through this group. So there's a lot of smaller efforts that come out of it. So there's a lot of smaller efforts that, that come out of it. But I will say this, it is hard sometimes to get members to join it. And I'll give you a story. I approached one member, a friend of mine, who happens in this case to be a Republican, but you could tell the story of Democrats as well, who, I described the group to him and said, you know, I'd really like for you to join it. He's a very conservative Republican from a very conservative district. And I said, you know, would you like to join? And he said, well, you know, I'd love to join, but you have to change the name of the group. I said, what do you mean you have to change the name of the group? He said, well, you know, my district, all I really have to worry about is my Republican primary. I don't ever get challenged by the Democrat. And so I just have to always make sure that I'm not getting outflanked from the right. And so any group that has the word "center" in it is going to give the, right, is going to give the impression that I'm cooperating with Democrats, and that's not going to help me in my election. And, and frankly, I think Democrats, there's, Democrats would say the same thing, who would worry about cooperating with the other, with the other side. And so you talk about how we grow the group and how we expand it. There are going to be some, not the majority, but there are going to be some members of both the left and the right who are going to see political weakness in joining a group like this. That's unfortunate. But, you know, it does represent this, this culture that Tim has represented in which, you know, we often get, you know, chided rather than applauded for trying to do this, this work.
Let me just, let me just elaborate to a limited extent. I know everybody's not going to be able to answer questions, and I don't want to be, spend too long on it. But if, I believe there's, there's a number of problems, a number of causes of the mood that we have. But there's two big causes that are institutional. I think Chris alluded to this. The first is redistricting. 80% of the districts in the United States, not Chris's, because he won against a Republican incumbent, not mine, at least my new one, but most districts in the state, the general election is irrelevant. You win the Democratic primary by posturing yourself sufficiently to the left that you can outflank your opponent. You win the Republican primary by positioning yourself sufficiently to the right, you can outflank your opponent. Then the general election is, is largely irrelevant. Until you solve that underlying problem of state-by-state redistricting, and Illinois is a classic example of blatant gerrymandering on both sides, then, then you, then you don't address that part of it. And frankly, here's, here's the other solution. I applaud the, the local media who are here. And you're, you're kind of working almost contrary to what I think the national media does. If I were to stand up here and say, you lie, or Chris were to stand up here and say, the other movement can all go straight to hell, I guarantee you, that would be national news. But when two people actually interact with one another, or an audience, then it's not news. And MSNBC, Fox News, CNN, NBC, CBS, the other networks aren't going to cover it, because it's not news. Harmony isn't news. And I think, with all due respect to my friends in the media who are here, and you're, you're good local people, and you do your job well, until you change that culture, and frankly, some of it's not just the media, it's the people who watch the stations. If they didn't sell, people wouldn't watch it. So part of it comes from you all, sending the message to the national media, we do want to see a change in mood. We do want to see an improvement in atmosphere. And until that happens, frankly, a lot of what we're doing, we're growing slowly but surely, thanks in large part to Congressman Murphy, we're, we're trying to permeate this mood. But five years from now, there's going to be a lot of the same anger, a lot of same anxiety, and a lot of the same criticism. The best we can do, Chris will be in a different body than I, but I'll hopefully still be here, we can continue to send the message that, that we do care. Now, let me say that in this audience, I look around and I see people who wouldn't vote for me in a million years, and there's people who, here who are going to vote for me no matter what, and vice versa if Chris were in this district. But I, but I, but I will tell you that you can be civil, you can work together without sacrificing fundamental principles. As Chris said, there are some issues that we're going to disagree on. We're actually both relative centrists in the bigger structure of things, but even if we weren't, even if we were both extremes, a very conservative and a very liberal person, you can still work together. And it doesn't have to be, most issues, as President Obama actually said at the '04 convention or wherever it was, most issues are not Democratic issues, or Republican issues, or independent issues, they're American issues. And they're world issues. And we can deal with them constructively if we try. And I hope we can succeed in sending that mood.
Well said.
Yeah, I'm, my name is Ann Clements, and I'm in Tim's district. I wanted to follow up on this a little bit, because I think this is very interesting. A couple of years ago, President, ex-President Clinton did an interview where he said something that I thought was very profound about the way that your lives have changed over the last, you know, 20, 30 years, and how, you know, the distances and the information overload and the pressure to politicking affects your mind space and how you operate as, as people trying to do this job. And that, that kind of links in with what you were saying about the mood and the way the mood operates. It's very easy for us out here to get the idea that there is some sort of shadowy conspiracy going on, on either or both sides, which is, which is fomenting this, this discord and rancor. And from, from your perspective, trying to work with this, to what extent is, is some of this stuff being imposed on you? And to what extent is it an organic thing that can be attacked by a process like yours?
Well, I think that's a great, I think that's a great question. And I think Tim started to hint at the answer, which is that most of the dysfunction has a solution to it, that, well, we can't control what the media covers, and we can't control the fact that naturally people are going to be more interested in conflict than they are in agreement. There are real changes in the way that government works that we do control. Redistricting is at the top of my list, just as it is with Tim's, and, and this is something that we have control of as a civilization. Are we going to create more districts with even numbers of Republicans and Democrats? Or are we going to create more safe districts? Another thing that I would add to that list is the current way that we fund campaigns. I really think that at the top of my list of evils is the pressure involved in raising campaign funds. And I think it creates to the, to this sort of deteriorating tone in a number of ways. One, it just sucks up a lot of time. You know, it costs in my district about $3 million to run for office. I have none of that under my mattress, and so I have to raise that in small contributions. And that just takes time away from what I could be using to get to know people on the other side of the aisle or trying to work and forge compromises. Second, it, it really creates an incentive to cast dispersions and create enemies. I always tell this story, that when I send out a fundraising email, I would like to tell you that the email that I send out that says, "I did something good," raises more money than the email that I send out that says the other side did something bad. But the reality is, is that more people give to campaigns based on what they fear than what they hope. And it creates an incentive for this dysfunction. So that's under our control. A lot of different ways that you can change the system, the campaign finance system, but I think we can all agree that the current way does not promote civil discourse, it discourages it. And so I do believe, as I, as I know Tim does, that this is within our control. And if we don't get a hold of it pretty soon, you know, I'm not apocalyptic about sort of what this country is going to meet in the next 10 years. I believe that we can figure out a way out of this mess, but, but only if we change those underlying foundations that are screwing dialogue up pretty bad at almost every level of government.
I, I do have a question. Look, what is it going to take for the state of Illinois to get out of the red with more than $13 billion in the hole here? And we, you know, we look for Congress to really get their act together and stop all the bickering in the world. Because if I have any kind of vision, I want the American people to get their livelihoods back and get back on track, so we can have jobs rolling, get our kids to go to school, stay in school. What is it going to take to turn it around? What are your goals in this, this year's election?
If we're both honest, one of our goals this, this election is for Chris Murphy and Tim Johnson to win the election. I'm only being facetious. I really, that's a very good question. On a national level, I think our common goal is to get our fiscal house in order or begin to reestablish our fiscal house. Us to realize that 9.1% unemployment is not a cause for political celebration or attack, it's a cause for concern in America and families in America. And, and we want to, we want to address that. I think our common concern would, would, would be to establish a, an international belief that America, that America is not just imposing its, its will on the world through the barrel of a gun, but to set an example of humanitarianism and democracy and otherwise, so that, so that we can reestablish America's reputation in the world. And you also addressed, I don't think Chris is in a position to, to address this, Illinois government. And I have found that in my endless calls that Chris has alluded to, that there's as much or more anger among the citizens of this state towards our state government than there is the federal government. And that is a stretch. And this is not a political statement, it's just a reality. We just had a recent increase of the state income tax of 70%, 67% or 70%. Regardless of whether you support or don't support that, what I find mind-boggling is that the same issues of education, of healthcare, Health Alliance specifically, the pensions and otherwise are still threatened. And, and, and I just, I continue to talk to my friends in the, in the delegation and say, what happened and where are we going? And I think those are common solutions that we're reaching. Chris, I preempted you there.
No, I, I know, I think you're, I think you're right on. And, you know, every, every year, for instance, that we ignore the debt crisis at the federal government that we're in, the fact that our two entitlement programs, Medicare more quickly than Social Security, are eventually going to go bankrupt, it makes it harder to fix. And so while I'm optimistic about our ability to get this thing going again, every year that we waste yelling at each other rather than trying to find a compromise makes the solution ultimately, ultimately harder. And, you know, I, I think that there are a lot of sort of more direct answers to your question about how we get people's livelihoods back, how do we get people back working again? But one of the things that is holding down our economy is the fact that a lot of businesses, big and small, are fearful of making investments in their future, because they don't think that we have our act together to make the right investments in America's future. And so when we talk about what are we doing as a, as a group, and is, should we be just talking about tone and civility, or should we be talking about bigger issues? Well, you know, if, if we can promote the right tone in Washington that gets us to make these big, long-term compromises, I actually think that is very relevant to people's livelihoods in their home. Because as much as yes, government can create a job by hiring a firefighter or hand people more money with a tax break that they can go spend in the economy, we also can unlock a lot of frozen investment in this country, specifically by showing some level of functionality in government. And I do think that has direct relevance to people's lives.
Let me just, let me just make a point here, but get another question here. But Chris has to go back to Chicago, and so we're going to, we're going to, inevitably going to have people who aren't going to be able to ask questions. And I don't, I want to apologize for that, but it's just the nature of the system. And we'll, we'll have more of these opportunities, and I guarantee you we will. But just to pre-apologize, we're, we kind of set some time goals, and we'll do the best we can.
We are running short. Okay. Yes, sir, you had your hand up.
Roger Borges, I'm from Mohammed. I applaud this Senate Isles' goal of bringing back civility. I might not have come here today after having gotten the invitation or a phone call, but then I saw something on the news, a former speaker made some statements about her opponents that cast them in light of they're evil people. And I would say on, in both houses and in both parties, to the extent that the argument unwinds into they're bad people, or they have bad thoughts in their hearts, or they're, I reject anybody that, and I think a lot of people reject politicians that make those kind of statements. If you don't like what Tim's idea is, I want to hear what's wrong with the idea, not what's wrong with Tim. And to the extent that your team, your coalition, can bring something to Congress that can help us there, that will help us to be able to hear you speak about issues and not about personalities and, and phantoms of evil that maybe are good to raise campaign contributions with, but don't really illuminate the electorate.
Listen, if I ever decide that Tim is evil, I just will keep it to myself. So, no, but I, I make, I just, a quick comment on that. I just make, I made that point about campaign fundraising to sort of show you the temptation. And to show you that, listen, I don't, I'm not, I'm not seeking to transfer blame here, but I'm sort of suggesting that we all have to answer this call. We all have to make sure that when those negative campaign commercials come up on the air, that we just don't tell people that they don't influence our vote, that we make sure that they don't influence our vote, that we all really do take the time to investigate what people stand for rather than, you know, simply voting on our feel for the individual personality. And so, listen, the lion's share of, of responsibility for fixing this thing lies on those that are in office. But I sort of share that story to sort of tell you where that temptation comes from. And the public and voters and campaign supporters can also play a role in lessening that temptation. That's just an element of an overall solution.
Let me, you said it better than either of us could. And by the way, it's become apparent, it should be apparent, why I have such a high regard for Congressman Murphy, his ability to, to work together, his decency, his friendship, it's easy to see why that's the case. You articulate it better than I. But I'll, I'll turn, and I think Chris has raised extraordinarily valid points, but I'm, I'm the preacher talking to the congregation. The people here overwhelmingly are here because you believe in what we do, not necessarily ideologically in every case, but direction-wise. But I put part of the blame, not only on the elected officials, but on the American people, only in this, only from this standpoint. And I don't want the film excerpt that Tim Johnson blamed the American people for incivility. And that's not my message. But my message is, when you have negative, negative campaign, why do people do it? I haven't engaged in that, and Chris hasn't either. But why, why do they do it? Because consultants tell them it works. And how does it work? Because people vote, in part, on negativism. Now, it doesn't mean we're justified in doing it, and we haven't, and I won't, and Chris won't. But nonetheless, there is a certain level, not a blame on the American people, but on the receptiveness of the American people to a negative message. So part of what you need to do, and we need to do, is to change that receptiveness, to ask the American people in bigger numbers to say, let's be accountable, let's cooperate, let's work together. And that message is what I think the American people need to send us, and it's a symbiotic matter. We need to then not only send that message to them, we need to practice what we preach. And so you said it extremely well. The blame does fall on us, we're the ones who are there. But we need to be in a, in a relationship with the people where the expectation is not negative, the expectation is what can you do positively for America? Or, in the case of disagreement, what is there about Congressman Murphy's philosophy or Congressman Johnson's philosophy that, with which you disagree? How can you persuade him or her to, to change? And where you can't, how can you work constructively together? And when all else fails, you're going to do what the American democracy permits, and that is you vote against that person or for someone else.
Okay, we'll have time for a couple more questions.
I'd like to know why we got money for wars, all foreign aid, the IMF, and when it comes to the seniors, they don't have any money for a cost of living. Now, something is wrong, because they leave out food and gasoline. Gasoline has doubled since he took over, and the food is on the way up to 10% or more. I think they could give the seniors a little.
You're, let me, let me just, this, I'm just going to be ideological for a minute, I guess. I find, and I don't even, I've checked Chris's voting record in this regard, I find the, what will be over, over $3 trillion that we have spent in Iraq, Afghanistan, Libya, and various other nations now, totally unacceptable, when we have a Social Security system, a Medicare system, and an education system are teetering on the balance. Because I don't believe that the Because I don't believe, at the end of the day, that anybody in Philo or Danbury are one iota safer because we've lost over 200,000 civilian and military lives in wars that I think can't define victory or defeat, when we have extraordinary needs here at home. And, and I believe that America is no safer because of our involvement, and I think our infrastructure is weaker because of our involvement here at home.
Start lifting your clips and play them back, back in Connecticut. That, no, listen, I, I can't say, I can't say that any, any better. I, I think, you know, you look at a war in Afghanistan that's costing us $2 billion a day, and you think about the fact that, you know, whether you want that money spent here in this country, or you just want that money not borrowed from China, there's a much better use for it. And, and I'll leave it there. Go to the next question. One more question, before you jump out of your chair.
My name is Susan Taylor. I'm concerned about any changes that might happen in the farm bill, in, as it particularly relates to the small farmer.
Kevin Johnson is here. Kevin Johnson forgot more in the last five minutes than, than the average 100,000 people know about farm policy. But I will tell you that I am the second-ranking member of the House Ag Committee, Chairman of Rural Development Biotech Research Subcommittee. I have a little bit of, a little bit of expertise and interest in that area. The farm bill, we are going to see what we see in every other area of spending, and that is shared sacrifice. We're going to have cuts in various programs that will hopefully allow our agricultural sector to not only survive, but to flourish. And we're hopeful that in the mix, the safety net that's critical to the agricultural community will be maintained, and in particular, small farmers. Obviously, there are, the issue's far beyond the farm bill, regulatory restriction and otherwise that affect the agricultural sector. But it's going to be a very difficult write-in. From what I understand, Kevin, you and Sam Fister in, in DC, we're going to be engaged in that process very shortly. And frankly, once the process starts of writing the farm bill, 98% of my time in DC has to be focused on that issue. Chairman Lucas is going to be with some significant responsibilities in that regard, and it's going to be a very difficult time. My last comment is, we hope, and I think Congressman Murphy again would agree, that the supercommittee will give us the latitude as the Ag Committee, and in Chris's case, his, his areas of, of involvement, to, in a very specific way, craft where the cuts have to be made, rather than from those to come down, from those to come down, for those to come down from Mount Olympus, so to speak.
Listen, you, you are incredibly, you know, lucky to have, you know, your congressman at the center of that conversation, as he mentioned, and we know, Tim is really one of the just go-to people in Washington when it comes to ag issues. And I think it's particularly appropriate that not only is he at that table, but he is leading this conversation on bipartisanship. Because the farm bill historically has been a bill that, you know, always has a handful of people voting against it, but has been written in a bipartisan way and presented to the House floor in a bipartisan way. And I would hope, certainly now as a member of the minority party in the House of Representatives, that that continues to be the litmus test for the agricultural bill. My district is all small farmers. And so what, you know, you see coming from members of the Northeast who are engaging in this process is a real defense of small-scale agriculture by, you know, we don't, we still have dairy farms, but, you know, they're, they're pretty small operations that have needed to diversify in a, a number of different ways. And so that really, you know, that perspective of, of speaking for small farmers is my main concern and my main interaction in that bill. But I will tell you, how I will get that done, and how I will make my case is by going and visiting Tim, because he is going to be receiving a lot of audiences from people around the, the country, given his, his leadership role in that issue. But we would like each of you to make a few closing remarks. Congressman Murphy, if you could start. Sure, absolutely. I will, I'll stick around a little while afterwards, just to chat with people individually. And I really, really appreciate the opportunity to do this. I appreciate the fact that we have a good press turnout today. There's actually, I think, a national story in the Associated Press on this meeting here today. And, you know, our, our hope, as we're keeping our fingers crossed that this would go well today, was that we can get some of our other colleagues to think about doing this as well. One of the things that happens when you have, you know, one crowd in Washington standing on this wall, and one crowd standing in this wall, is that you don't have the chance to realize what you agree on. That you just sort of assume that everybody on the other side must not believe in what you believe in. And listen, there are, there are places where we're not in the same place. I mean, I, I voted for the healthcare bill, didn't we? You know, there are, there are different things that we're just not going to agree on, but the fact is, is that this conversation, and I think what you see from today, gives us some ideas on where we can agree on. And, and just like every family knows, talking is the most important thing to ultimately finding a way to live in, in harmony. And I'm just, I'm so glad that you've sent somebody to Washington who had the vision to start this organization. I'm so glad that he's allowed me to step in and be a part of it. I really thought to myself, and I've said this to my constituents publicly, that, that I sort of wondered how long I was going to last in Washington if I didn't find a way to be part of the solution. And as Tim mentioned, in Connecticut, I'm running for the United States Senate next fall, and so I'm essentially applying to do this job for another six years. And I sometimes wonder to myself whether or not I would have made that decision if it weren't for the Center Isle Caucus, if it weren't for the feeling that I had that I now am engaged in at least a small part in, in fixing this thing, rather than just being part of an institution that, that feels broken. And I am at the very core, just one of these glass half-full guys. I, I see every day how backwards and broken this system is, but I also get these sort of wonderful glimpses of how it could be better. And the Center Isle Caucus and our ability to come here and have this civil dialogue over an hour, an hour and 15 minutes just reaffirms my faith in that fact. But it only happened because you sent Tim Johnson to Washington to stand up for his convictions, but also to stand up for the fact that this place can work again. So with that, I want you to give yourself a round of applause. Thank you very much for letting me come today.
Let me, let me say, Congressman Murphy, on behalf, I'm, I know everybody in here, our staff, this audience, my constituents, people of the United States for that matter, we're really honored that you're here. You're a breath of fresh air in a, in an environment that in some ways is, is poisoned. And you make it better, and I'm just gratified that you're down here with us, honored that you join us, and I will, in fairly short order, in fact, I think we're arrangements now, I'm going to be in Connecticut, and I want to tell your people how blessed they are to have you as their, as their congressman. Let me also mention, and I know this is a little schmaltzy, but I guess I'll be accused accordingly, there's some individuals, I'm not going to have them stand up or anything, but some individuals who are here who, through many, many years, including one who helped me when I was an infant, who's played a kind of a special role in my life, Mary Lynn and Phil Lamont and Marilyn Habib, you've been special people in my life, and just to have you here in one room is just a, really is, really a neat thing. Mostly, it's a neat thing to have my constituents here. We've got a lot of issues on the plate. We do have some areas where we can make this Center Isle Caucus be substantive, a biennial budget, Billie's Law, children's welfare, fiscal accountability, there's some things, and we're going to do that. But the main message we want to send is that members of Congress can and do and should interact with each other in a civil way for the interests of the United States. And anything less than that is not acceptable. So on behalf of Congressman Murphy and I and our staff, I'm very grateful for your being here, and grateful for your allowing me to represent you, and I never take it, take it for granted, it's an everyday honor, and look forward to working with you down the line. God bless.
Thank you.